Thank you so much, Lynn TV, for giving me this opportunity. Hi, my name is Stacy Bryant Brown. I'm a lifelong resident of Lynn. I'm a proud graduate from Lynn Classical High School. I received my Bachelor's in Criminal Justice from Salem State University. I am deeply invested in the future of our schools and the success of our students. For 30 years, I worked, I served as a juvenile court officer. Most of these years in Lynn, which I love. I must say, I love my kids. I always encourage them. I always, I build them up, not break them down. Because you gotta, I believe in building them up. They're already broken when they come into the system. I believe in building them up. I work closely with youth during their most challenging times, guiding them and encouraging them. And I always let them know that their past does not define their future. I believe every child deserves someone to see their potential, and that I always do. Even when they don't see it in themselves, I always let them know that I believe in you, and I'm never going to give up on you. I always say, I tell them, because I see them more than once, more than twice sometimes, and I always say, "I'm not giving up on you. I believe in you." And it makes a difference. I see firsthand how students fall through the cracks, not because they're bad, but because they're struggling with trauma, struggle with trauma, mental health, poverty. I'm running for school committee so that I can be in the room where decisions are We are facing a youth mental health crisis. Our schools need more than just focus on discipline policies. They need empathy, services, and trusted adults. I want every student to know that there's help available, and we'll meet them where they are. Even when we acknowledge behavior, we should always look for, we should also look for the story. Because there's always a story behind that behavior. We just, we just gotta get to know that story. And once we get to know that story, we begin to know that child. And then, once that happens, they begin to trust us. And then they begin to believe that somebody cares. I want to be that voice on the school committee that always asks, "How are we supporting this student as a person?" This is my second time running, and I am more determined than ever. I'm a mentor, and I'm an advocate, and I'm someone that shows up for our kids every I cannot stress enough how much I love my kids. And if I am elected to be on the school committee, your kids become my kids, because I love all kids. And I will do whatever I have to do to help make our kids be successful in life. I hope that you will vote for me to continue to do the work that I do on the school committee level.
Hello, my name is Brian Castellanos, and I'm proud to be running for reelection to the Lynn School Committee. I'm a proud product of the Lynn Public Schools and a graduate of Lynn English. My life's work has been rooted in public service. My career has been dedicated to child welfare, where I've worked to protect some of the most vulnerable children in the Commonwealth. I hold a Bachelor's Degree in Criminology and a Master of Science Degree in Criminal Justice. Beyond my work in the city and on the school committee, I serve as a trustee for SEIU Local 509, where I'm responsible for safeguarding union members' dues and providing fiscal oversight. This important role has strengthened my understanding of budgeting and financial responsibility, skills I've brought to both my service in the union and in my role as a public official here in Lynn. I'm also a board member with Leap for Education, which runs the Dream More After-School Program at Marshall Middle School through the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant. I'm a proud Lynn homeowner, and most importantly, I'm the father of a one-year-old daughter who will one day attend the Lynn Public Schools. That gives me even greater purpose and urgency in this work, because I want to be the best for every child in our district, just as I do for my own. I've been a strong advocate for transparency and student-centered decisions. I've never been afraid to ask the hard questions, especially during the budget process, because every family deserves to know where their tax dollars are going and how those dollars support our classrooms. I served on the Pickering Building Committee, where I worked to ensure we move forward with a new middle school to relieve overcrowding. I supported the expansion of pre-K, and I've been a vocal champion for social emotional learning initiatives. Mental health supports for students, families, and staff must remain a top priority. I also proudly voted to support the recently negotiated Lynn Teachers Union Contract, because our educators are essential to our schools and deserve the support and respect they've earned. As I run for reelection, I remain focused on building a future where every student has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve in our community. My team and I would love to hear from you. We can be reached at Brian for Lynn School Committee on Facebook. My cellphone, my cellphone number, call me directly at 781-346-2087. I would appreciate hearing from you, and we look forward to knocking doors and canvassing the community to, to, to work for you, because I'm always a candidate who, people first. I choose the people of the city of Lynn, and I will protect and represent, as I always have for the last four terms. So, thank you. And I humbly ask you for one of your six votes this election.
Hello, everyone. You may be wondering, who am I and why I'm here before you today? Well, my name is Julie Pyram Dorsey, and I'm running to serve as your next Lynn School Committee Member. Just to give you a little bit of my background, I am a proud wife of retired United States Air Force Vet and a public servant, and I'm a devoted mother of two wonderful children. My roots here in Lynn run deep. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Lynn. I was raised by my grandmother in the Towers. I attended Washington Elementary School, Breed Middle School, and Lynn Classical, the original. Along the way, I also had the unique opportunity to attend an American boarding school in Haiti, an experience I will always cherish. After graduating from Lynn Classical in 1991, I continued my education at Simmons College. I was able to obtain both Bachelor's and Master's Degrees. I became homeowner in Lynn at the age of 21, a milestone that filled me with pride and joy and responsibility. Professionally, I spent nearly 16 years working as a Director of Housing for just two organizations. Throughout my career in the industry of housing in the Boston area, I never lost sight of my commitment to Lynn. I continued as a resident here throughout my entire career while working in Boston. It was to attain and to invest in this community and to always call this city my home. After being diagnosed with thyroid cancer and beating it, it was my time to step away from that career. I knew it was time to give back to the place that I had given so much joy and opportunity throughout my years. So, I immersed myself in giving back to this community. Over the years, I've had the privilege to work alongside the incredible leaders like Agnes, Ralph Edwards, and Drew to assist other candidates, whose work I deeply respected. I became a proud member of the North Shore Latino Association in 2012, a proud member of the Lynn and the Hot Beach Association, and most recently, a board member of the North Shore Christian School of Lynn. These experiences have certain my belief in the opportunity and the power of leadership and collaboration. But I wanted to do more. I knew the schools and dedicated teachers needed support. Therefore, I set my eyes on investing in our schools. I understood that the greatest need was inside the classrooms. I had set a goal for myself, to work as a substitute teacher in every school in this city within two years. I am proud to say that I met that goal. It was an incredible experience to continue to contribute directly to the education of students across all 27 schools in Lynn. Throughout that journey, one school captured my heart daily, and that was Fecto Larry Junior/Senior High School. I admired the talent and dedication of those staff. I admired the leadership wholeheartedly, and I was inspired daily by the courage of those students. I served at Fecto Larry for seven years, including throughout the unprecedented challenges of the pandemic lockdown. Even during those difficult times, I showed up every day, fully committed to the students, the staff, and their families. I understood the importance of consistency, compassion, and connection, because education doesn't pause in a crisis. My experience during these years only deepened my commitment to our mission, ensuring every student has the resource, support they need to succeed. But I wanted to do more. Therefore, it was only fitting that I take this next step, put my name forward, and run for office. It has been such an honor and privilege to engage with so many of you while collecting my signatures for my nomination papers. Those conversations have given me the chance to listen to your voices, to hear your concerns, and to feel the warmth of your engagement and support, your encouragement. It has been so helpful. One of the greatest rewards of this campaign has been the opportunity to build relationships across the city. Though these connections have heard, I've heard your optimism, your hopes and your dreams for the future of our schools. What I'm looking forward to the most is building partnerships and collaborating with like-minded individuals who share a genuine commitment to the success and well-being of both our students and their family. And if given the opportunity, I would be honored to implement more about what I stand for, which is strong leadership, accountability, and relentless commitment to the future success of every student in Lynn. This is why I'm asking for your vote to serve as your next school committee member in this great city of Lynn. Together, let's work to lead our students towards their greatest potential. Thank you for your time, your support, and your belief in the brighter future for our school. My name is Julie Pyram Dorsey, and I am qualified to be your next school committee
Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Dugan, and I am running for reelection to the Lynn School Committee. I'm a lifelong and proud educator. For the last 20-plus years, I have dedicated my professional career to teaching and educational leadership. I have also volunteered in many aspects in our city. Both of my sons enjoy sports, and I have volunteered in many capacities in the youth sport programs throughout the city. So, I bring a perspective of a community leader and professional educator to the committee. I believe this perspective is critical to balance out the committee. My wife, a teacher in Lynn Public Schools, and I have raised our two great children in Lynn, and are proud to call in our home. Both of my children attended the Lynn Public Schools and had a great experience. They both graduated from Classical and are both doing very well. The Lynn Public Schools had a lot to do with that. If elected, I will be serving out my third term. When I look back on the first term and a half, I'm proud of the accomplishments that have been made by the current school committee, and I believe that I've played a big hand in these improvements to the Lynn Public Schools. First, the work on the new Pickering Middle School is progressing. The school is projected to open within the next couple of school years and will bring much-needed, modern learning spaces to LPS. Not only that, but this new project will help alleviate the overcrowding in our middle schools. The plan to redistrict at the middle school level has already been approved, and it promises to bring manageable class sizes for our students and educators. Next, as Chair of the Policy Subcommittee, I have worked on and endorsed policies that have made positive impacts on the schools in Lynn. These policies, I believe, have made our schools safer and more engaging for the students. The most recent policy is our updated cellphone policy. For this, I worked closely with our state delegates and got valuable insight from them as what it is potentially happening at the state level. As some of you may know, there is state legislation in the queue that will encourage all districts in the state to develop policies that ensure that cellphone use by students is limited from bell to bell. Our new policy does just that, and it puts Lynn ahead of the curve in this respect. I believe that we developed a policy that will make our schools safer from cyberbullying and limit distractions that cellphones can cause in the classroom. The policy is on the more moderate level. This means it's not a complete ban on phones in school, just off and out of sight during learning hours. It leaves room for our students to be able to use phones outside of learning time to coordinate schedules with families, which I know from experience can change frequently. Another big improvement that is coming is our funding to extracurricular activities. In the last budget that the committee passed, we increased the line item for our extracurricular activities at all of our high schools. This is an example of the priority, I believe, that should be put on extracurricular activities at our secondary schools. Not only that, but this change was driven by the students themselves, who spoke up about the inequities they see when they travel to other districts due to Lynn's past inadequate funding. So, it's also an example of how this committee has elevated the student voice in our schools. This is also a very positive change. Finally, there have been many facilities upgrades since my time began on the committee. With the purchase of the old Eastern Bank Building by the city, the school committee that I am a part of has approved many upgrades that will benefit LPS. That building will essentially be a brand-new campus for LPS without having to do any new major construction. The building will now house the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. This is an early college program that has expanded under my time on the committee. When students graduate, they not only have a high school diploma, but they have potential to earn enough credits for an associate's degree as well. Another example is the old Briar Cliff Building on Lynnfield Street. Again, without any new major construction, we have been able to add a campus to LPS. This is now the state-of-the-art home for our teams program. These students now have the much-needed space to learn and grow. And finally, during my time on the school committee, we have added many much-needed full-time preschool seats that have greatly expanded our early childhood programs on Bessemer Street and now Bennett Street. This is a significant gain for the whole city of Lynn. And while those are a few of the highlights of things that I've been a part of during my time on the committee, we still have some major work to do. My vision for my third term starts with our students' performance gaps. If elected, I hope to spearhead initiatives that will help close the gaps that our students still experience in relation to other communities. In the way, try not to put too much stock in standardized testing scores. This is a clear weakness that needs to be addressed within our students in Lynn. By working with our administrative team on best practices in the classroom, I am confident that we can close these gaps. Next, I would like to see us continue to work on pathways post-graduation for our students. While we have made major gains here, there is still more we can be doing. For example, using partnerships within our own community more effectively for our students to be able to intern in a profession of their choice, especially in the later years of high school. And finally, and some may say most importantly, we need to fully staff our schools. This means making Lynn a more attractive place for educators to come work. Our students deserve to have full-time teachers in front of them daily. Too often, our staff doesn't stay in Lynn. The goal moving forward needs to be to find out why this is so and really work on retaining the most talented teachers that we can. So, clearly, I have a lot more work to do, and the only way I can do it is with your support. It's a crowded field with some very qualified candidates, and I'm gonna need your help. So, please vote Eric Dugan on Tuesday, September 2nd, in the primary, and again, November 4th, in the general election. Send me back, and let me continue to be the leadership students deserve.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Gately, running for my sixth term on Lynn School Committee. Before I begin my speech, I would like to thank Lynn Community TV for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you today. I want you to know a few things about myself. I grew up here in Lynn, and I am a very proud Linnor. I have been a Lynn Public Schools science biology teacher for 33 and a half years before I retired. I love teaching, and I love our students. They deserve the best. I decided to run for school committee to make our schools better. A lot of changes have occurred over the past five terms. Unfortunately, our students are still recovering from learning loss that occurred during the pandemic. Our district has been working hard to recover this learning loss and has shown some success, but we can and will do better. As the Chair of Building and Grounds Subcommittee, one of our biggest concerns has been our aging facilities and lack of space, especially in our secondary schools. So, over the past two years, there have been many transformative facilities, decisions that were coordinated to provide new opportunities and reduce overcrowding in the middle and high schools. First and foremost is the Pickering Middle School Building Project. As Building and Grounds Chair, I sit on the Pickering Buildings Committee during monthly meetings. I have worked hard with Mayor Nicholson towards seeing the project through to completion, predicting for the fall of 2027. I know nothing is perfect, every project has glitches, but with the oversight of our Director of Capital Projects and our Chief Manager of Operations, I am optimistic that the building will be done on time. Second is the Virginia Barton Life Skills Academy that opened up in March of 2025. The students who moved there from Lynn Tech are doing well in their new home. The new academy led to space opening up at Lynn Tech, allowing for newer shops, and an increase in the number of students being able to attend Lynn Tech. This will lower the numbers in both of the large overcrowded high schools, Lynn Classical and Lynn English. In addition, the Discovery Middle School at Tech will also have increased enrollment for the fall of 2026. Third is the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy expansion as it moves into its fourth year. The North Shore community space for Frederick Douglass was a small leased space, and there was little room for increased expansion. Fortunately, the five-story Eastern Bank Building across the street from North Shore Community College decided to sell their property. The mayor, superintendent, and myself all agreed about the need for the space that Eastern Bank had to offer and was approved by the city council. So, last August, the mayor figured out a way to purchase the building, which freed up the cost of all the yearly leases our district had to spend. It was decided to move Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy to the much larger Eastern Bank space. Then, the mayor's office, Policy Director, and Lynn Public Schools Innovation Director worked in collaboration to obtain a generous $2 million grant from the Eastern Bank Foundation to outfit the new space for an opening in fall of 2025. The amount of students able to attend Frederick Douglass increased, further enabling a decrease of numbers at our overcrowded, large high schools. Fourth major change is at Fecto Larry, which is being transformed to a state-of-the-art, new, grade six through 12 school. City Arts and Science Academy, CASA. The Lynn Public Schools Innovation Department formed a pathway project-based school that a lot of people in the community are looking forward to seeing their children attend. This program will increase their enrollment and will increase a ninth in middle school yearly, which will decrease the number of students at Classical in English and also the middle school. Lastly, with the change of the administration, building personnel moving to Eastern Bank, there will be additional preschool classrooms opening at Bennett Street for this fall 2025. All of these projects have been extremely important to solve the overcrowding that has developed over the years. I want to praise the collaboration between the mayor, superintendent, school committee members, and city council for supporting the many changes needed to improve Lynn Public Schools facilities. Our students deserve quality buildings, whether we remodel or we build brand-new buildings. As Chair of the Building and Grounds Subcommittee, my job is never done. We have to move our sights onto our aging elementary schools, some of which are over or approaching 100 years old. I want to be part of that team that moves Lynn Public Schools forward. So, when you go to the polls on Election Day, please consider me for one of your six votes. Thank you, and have a great summer.
Hi, my name is Lenny Penya. I'm a lifelong Lynn resident. My beautiful family and I, we currently reside on Engel Street in East Lynn, and I'm currently serving on my second term on the school committee, seeking a third. I am proud to, to have served on the Negotiation Committee, which ratified a contract on June 12th, 2025, something that hasn't been done in over 40 years, a new contract before the contract, the old contract was over, with a new contract with hiring incentives and retention strategies for our proud professionals, our educators, and that just shows the commitment from our administrators and our educators for our students. I also work and I volunteer at the Lynn YMCA, and I currently work at the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission, where I service all drains and sewer lines for our constituents, making sure everything's running smooth. I'm also the founder of Lynn is Against Drug Abuse. We're a nonprofit, and we specialize in bringing resources and information to all, to all of those who are suffering from substance use disorder, and we do an annual walk every year. We do a Walk Against Drugs, and every year in fall, we have a costume contest for our, for all students in Lynn. And what we do is try to provide a safe atmosphere for, for everyone to enjoy a good time and be safe. When you, I humbly ask for one of your six votes, and when you vote for Lenny Penya, you vote, you vote for leadership with passion and a purpose. Thank you. Hola, mi nombre es Lenny Penya. Yo soy residente de mucho tiempo aquí en Lynn. Mi bella familia y yo vivimos la Engel Street en el este de Lynn. Actualmente estoy en mi segundo término y estoy buscando un tercer término en el comité escolar de Lynn. Estoy muy orgulloso de anunciar que yo fui parte del comité de negocio para un contrato nuevo que se ratificó el día 12 de junio del 2025, algo, algo que no se ha hecho en más de 40 años. Es un nuevo contrato antes de que el viejo se, se venciera. Y teníamos mucha estrategia de retención y mucho incentivo para recoger más gente de color, gente que habla en dos idiomas, para, y eso solamente muestra el, el esfuerzo, el compromiso que tienen los educadores, el comité escolar, y la administración para el beneficiar de todo, de nuestros estudiantes. También yo trabajo con el departamento de agua de aquí de Lynn, y trabajo con el departamento de desagüe y del, y el drenaje, asegurando que todo esté limpio, que todo esté corriendo bien para todos nuestros, nuestros residentes. Y también trabajo y soy voluntario en el YMCA. También soy el fundador y el director de Lynn is Against Drug Abuse. Eso es un sin lucro que especializa entrando recursos e información para todo que están sufriendo. sufriendo con enfermedades de adicción. Y yo soy disponible, me pueden contactar a mí en mi número teléfono, y estamos ahí dispuestos para todo el mundo ayudarle. También hacemos una caminata todos los años, y también hacemos un concurso de disfrute en octubre para darle un amesfero sano y bien para todos los jóvenes, para que disfruten buen tiempo. Cuando votan por mí, van a votar por liderazgo, con pasión, con presupuesto. Por favor, yo les pido, por favor, denme uno de sus seis votos ahora en septiembre y en noviembre. Gracias.
Hello, Lynn. Hola, Lynn. My name is Brenda Ortiz McGrath, and I'm proud to share a little bit about myself and why I'm running for Lynn School Committee. Lynn is home. I am a wife and a mother of two girls. As a parent and educator, I am deeply committed to the future of our schools and to every student in our city. I also bring a personal connection to this work. I'm a former English language learner who received extra help in elementary school and additional support throughout middle school. I know firsthand how it feels to struggle academically and to feel like the odds are against you. That experience shaped my commitment to education. I want every student to know there is no impossibility. I am proof that everything is possible, even when people say you can't. My mission is to be that role model for students who may be struggling or doubting themselves, because I know what it's like to need that support and to overcome those barriers. I bring over twenty years of experience in education. I'm a social worker by training, and I've dedicated my career to supporting students and families. I've served as a school social worker, high school principal, and district administrator. I was the first female and first Latina principal in fifty-four years at Waltham High School. During my time there, I helped oversee the planning of a new state-of-the-art high school building, a $348 million project, the largest high school investment in Massachusetts. That experience taught me the importance of infrastructure planning, large-scale budgeting, and fighting for the resources our schools need to truly serve our students in the 21st century. I am now working as a district administrator, where I help lead mental health, social emotional learning, and student support services. I understand firsthand the complexities of school budgets, state and federal funding challenges, and the need for creative, sustainable solutions. Here are my top priorities for the Lynn school system. We need to expand extended learning opportunities that truly meet the needs of our students: after-school programs, tutoring, enrichment, extracurricular activities, sports, and partnerships that keep kids engaged, supported, and safe. I am going to advocate for critical resources and funding. I know the budget constraints our district's face, but I also know there is money out there. As an experienced grant writer, I've successfully brought in new funding, including most recently securing $100,000 for mental health support in Chelsea Public Schools. I will work tirelessly to identify and secure similar resources for Lynn. School infrastructure must be improved. Our students deserve facilities that are modern, safe, and equipped for the demands of the 21st century, from classrooms and technology to basics like plumbing, heating, and accessibility. Finally, let's support and not hinder our teachers. We need to ensure they have the resources and support they need, including something as simple but essential as reliable parking. As someone who has worked in Lynn Public Schools, I know firsthand how challenging it can be for staff just to get to work. I am committed to listening and collaborating with all parties working in our school systems: the students, the teachers, the staff, the educators, the administration, and the people of the city of Lynn. We need to bring real solutions that help every student in Lynn thrive. I believe in transparent, community-centered leadership that includes families, educators, and students in the conversation. I'm running for Lynn School Committee because I love this city, I love its people, and I believe in our children. I believe they deserve the very best. That's why I ask for one of your six votes for school committee on November 4th. Thank you. Gracias por su apoyo. Juntos podemos lograrlo.
I'm Andrea Sadowite, and I am honored to be running for reelection to the school committee. As many of you know, I am a lifelong Lynn resident, an LVTI alumni, and a proud inductee of the LVTI Hall of Fame. Deeply rooted in the community, my family and I remain actively involved in civic and educational initiatives. I currently serve the Lynn School Committee, where I am committed to student success. Outside of the committee, I am involved in mentorship, working closely with 12th-grade girls, leaving a lasting impact as they transition to their college years. As a graduate from LPS and a mother of four, with three in the Lynn Public School System, and a former LPS school nurse employee, I have spent over fourteen years as a dedicated registered nurse. As a current nurse practitioner, I provide care across all stages, from working with pediatrics, nursing mothers as a lactation specialist, to working with our aging population and everyone in between. I also bring my passion for people in the community to the real estate field as I work as a local Realtor. Over the past two years on the committee, I have worked hard to represent our students, families, and educators with transparency, dedication, and a deep commitment to the success of every child in our district. Together, we've made progress, whether it's strengthening academic programs, supporting our teachers, or ensuring safe and inclusive schools. The decisions that I take part in on the committee impact not only your children, but mine as well. As Chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee, we've built stronger community partnerships, supported curriculum updates, including the expansion of early college programs, additional honors and AP courses, and access to vocational pathways, enhancing both student achievement and educational training. More students have more opportunities now. We have hired a permanent special ed administrator, a much-needed role that has improved communication and has brought informative presentations to the community. Additionally, updated facilities to serve special ed students better. The committee is actively involved in the ongoing Pickering Middle School project, which addresses overcrowding and outdated infrastructure, just to name a few. The list goes on. These were not small wins. These were critical steps in building a school system that reflects the values and hopes of our community. But our work is not done. We are at a moment when public education faces new challenges: academic recovery after the pandemic, school safety concerns, equity gaps, and the evolving needs of both students and educators. This is not the time to lose momentum. It's the time to build on what we've started. If reelected, I will remain focused on prioritizing student well-being, including mental health, safety, and support services, ensuring fiscal responsibility while advocating for the resources our schools truly need, empowering all educators, because great teachers are the foundation of great schools, listening to our families, educators, and community with transparency, respect, and accountability. I am proud of what we've accomplished, but I am even more inspired by what lies ahead. I humbly ask for your vote, your trust, and your voice to help continue the work that we've started, because every student deserves the chance to succeed, and our schools deserve leaders who are committed, experienced, and ready to keep fighting for what's right. I am one of those leaders, and I am a product of our school system. Thank you for believing in our students. Thank you for believing in our schools, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Tristan Smith, and I'm running to join the Lynn School Committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak directly to you, and thank you to Lynn Community Television for this opportunity. I'm running because Lynn Public Schools is at a critical moment for our students and staff, and I bring a background that combines legal and political work with extensive experience working with our youth, having worked in various roles in K-12 education. I've been a track and field coach in Lynn for the past eight years, a professor at Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy, working with Lynn Public School students, and a teaching fellow during my time in law school, teaching constitutional law in Boston Public Schools. These experiences allow me to bring not just the firsthand experience as an educator, but also the experiences that students have shared with me about what it is like to be a student in the present day. Additionally, I'm an attorney and a co-founder of All Lynn Track and Field, a nonprofit that supports Lynn cross-country and track student athletes. We have several terrific initiatives taking shape in Lynn Public Schools, including the new Pickering Middle School, expansions of early college opportunities, and the addition of available spots at Lynn Tech. And all of this will take collaboration and hard work to ensure the success of our students. In addition to budgetary discipline and putting the needs of students and teachers first, I have several policy proposals I hope to bring if I am so fortunate to be elected to a seat on the school committee. First, I want to equip our students with 21st century skills through modern pathways to earning their diploma and ensure that we are improving student achievement. Second, I believe we can improve how our school committee functions, encouraging our members to have more transparency and be more active in our school communities and within other city departments. And third, as one of the largest public school districts in Massachusetts, I want to partner with other urban districts to ensure that those concerns which we experience firsthand are being listened to and addressed, and that changes are being made at those higher levels where they can make a greater impact. I intend to wage a vigorous campaign to meet every voter where they are and hear your concerns. Please visit my website, smithforlynn.com, to see my full platform and to see where you can reach out to me directly. Lynn Public Schools serves over 17,000 students, and I'm running because every single one matters. Thank you again for listening, and I hope that I can earn your vote.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Tristan Smith. Me presento como candidato para el comité escolar de Lynn. Gracias por permitirme hablar con usted directamente, y gracias a Lynn Community Television por esta oportunidad. Me presento como candidato porque las escuelas públicas de Lynn están en momento crítico para nuestros estudiantes y empleados. Yo traigo una experiencia que combina trabajo legal y político con trabajo extenso con nuestros jóvenes. He trabajado en varios roles en educación K a doce. He sido entrenador de atletismo durante los últimos ocho años. Un profesor a Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy instruyendo a los estudiantes de las escuelas públicas de Lynn. Y un teaching fellow durante mi tiempo en la facultad de derechos enseñando la ley constitucional en las escuelas públicas de Boston. Y estas experiencias me permiten traer no solo mis experiencias como educador, pero también las experiencias que mis estudiantes me han compartido de cómo es ser un estudiante hoy en día. Además, soy abogado y cofundador de All Lynn Track and Field, una organización sin fines de lucro que apoya a los estudiantes atletas de Lynn en los deportes de campo a través y el atletismo. En las escuelas públicas de Lynn estamos desarrollando varias iniciativas excelentes como la nueva escuela Pickering, la ampliación de las oportunidades de acceso a la Universidad Temprana, y la incorporación de plazas disponibles en Lynn Tech. Todo esto requerirá colaboración y trabajo arduo para garantizar el éxito de nuestros estudiantes. Y además de disciplinar presupuestaria y poniendo las necesidades de estudiantes y profesores primero. Tengo muchas propuestas de políticos que espero llevar si yo tengo la oportunidad de ganar un asiento en el comité. En primer lugar, quiero dotar a nuestros estudiantes de habilidades de siglo XXI mediante vías modernas para obtener su diploma y asegurar que mejoremos el rendimiento estudiantil. En segundo lugar, creo que ponemos mejorar el funcionamiento de nuestro comité escolar, animando a nuestros miembros a ser más transparientes y activos en nuestras comunidades escolares y con otros departamentos de la ciudad. Y tercero, como uno de los distritos escolares públicos más grandes de Massachusetts, quiero colaborar con otros distritos urbanos para asegurar que los asuntos que experimentamos directamente se escuchen y aborden, y que se implementen cambios a niveles superiores donde puedan tener un mayor impacto. Estoy intentando de hacer una campaña vigorosa para encontrar todos los votantes donde están y oír sus asuntos. Por favor, visite a mi sitio web, smithforlynn.com, a ver mi plataforma completa y donde puede ponerse en contacto conmigo. Las escuelas públicas de Lynn sirven más que diecisiete mil estudiantes, y cada uno se importa. Por eso, me presento como candidato. Gracias por escucharme, y espero que yo pueda ganar su voto.